All right, it's seven, seven thirty. As scheduled, we'll go ahead and begin the meeting. We do have a quorum of all members of the Board of Supervisors here for this joint meeting of the Amelia County Board of Supervisors and the Amelia County Planning Commission for the purposes of a joint public hearing. I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Moyer.
Thank you. I assume, Holly, the first item of business can be the amendments?
Correct.
All right, all the planning commission members look at your amendments. Let's see, county zoning ordinance include definitions of Assembly Hall and amend the definition of the hospital. Did y'all look over those? Any questions?
Now, this is a completely housekeeping venture. I had somebody asking about an assembly hall, even having a definition for one, that we needed to get that in there. And our definition for hospital didn't line up with the current times, so it needed to be updated.
Any questions from commission members? Not all opening up public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against the two amendments? Or the change in, or updating the definition of Assembly Hall and amend the definition of hospital? Would anyone like to speak? Do you have any email comments on? Hearing nothing. I'll close public hearing on those two items. Is that all the public here known?
Yes.
That was the entirety of the joint meeting, yes. With reaching the conclusion of our stated agenda, does anyone have a reason for us to continue or add anything additional to the agenda? Or based on that, I'll call the meeting to adjourn and turn it over to Chairman Moyer for the next, for the next meeting.
Okay. We have a quorum. What's your pleasure on the joint public hearing minutes and the planning commission minutes of March twenty second? They were in your book or?
Make a motion to approve them.
Motion been made or second? May second. Any more questions? Not all in favor, making no say an eye?
Uh huh.
All opposed, same sign. The next thing is the bylaws that we tabled last month. Is there any questions on there? You see the red was updated?
Yes, if anybody who wasn't here last month, I think we were missing a couple. We went and heard, everything in red is what the county attorney Jeff Ward has suggested. There's no major changes to content, just the biggest portion is adding in the ability to do electronic meetings. And then he put in the duties of taking commissioners.
I had one question, Holly, on two point one. I didn't realize that it said at least half the members have to own property. I assumed that all members had their own property. In the red, the second line?
That's the way they read now, so if they want to change them, that's something you can discuss.
I'm just wondering, you know, how conscientious somebody would be if they were just renting. That's my own perspective. Anyone else have any comments? And I assume the other thing is on page. Article six dash one, probably right there, one. I'm assuming if we have any member that's not attending, but it's on electronic, will need a motion from the floor to put that in the minutes as I think the top somewhere in there states that. I'm just wondering, I know salt and water, you have to have that in the, have to have a motion to acknowledge to somebody who they are.
Right, and there was a matter too that it had to be noted on the minutes as well that somebody attended the election.
Anyone else have any comments? If you don't want to speak. I did notice here too that required you not to miss four meetings a year.
Yes, and I believe that was one of those, that's already been in.
That's the first time I'd seen that.
Yeah, the only things that Jeff added are what the font is actually in red, the stuff that's highlighted in red, he just had comments, but that's verbatim out of the existing bylaws.
Correct.
I agree with the owner, I think the membership owner, his own property here, that gives it a vested interest.
I'm saying fifty percent, I can see maybe twenty five percent, but fifty percent's a little high, I think.
I agree.
I mean, should you, I don't know if we could have a hundred percent, but should you have a certain percentage or?
Are you talking about lowering it or raising it?
Raising it.
It's fifty percent.
Said at least half. I mean, as chairman, I'm not supposed to make any motions, but.
It wouldn't hurt my feelings to see it made that they, that they all have to own property in the county, because you have a vested interest in what benefits the county in general, if you do that.
I just kind of thought if you did own anything, you're just renting. You come in, pay something, gone next week.
That's right.
That's my understanding.
Any legal ramifications for saying that all have their own property?
I don't believe so. I'll just have to double check because the planning commission was created with a resolution from the board, so we'll need to confirm that that was not in the resolution that created the planning commission, because then the board would probably need to amend the resolution to match up with the bylaws.
All right. So it's got to be tabled again for another month to go back and check on that?
Yep, we can do that.
You made like all, all where it had to be landowners, that could be seen as prohibitive as far as being a member, maybe ninety percent or?
Yeah, I mean, I can come back and that's the issue that needs to be cleared.
I think fifty percent's too high myself.
Too low, it should be higher.
It makes us too many.
Too many non.
Right, right, yeah.
So I could see, you know, ten percent or something like that, I mean, when we're at twelve, fifteen, at least two, it could be that gap.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yeah.
I think Holly has a good point, though. Since you don't get to select who, the people, they're nominated and approved by the Board of Supervisors, you're really not going to be able to make control of this one regardless, I think. So even if you're saying a hundred percent, the board is the one that's going to appoint, that's what she's saying, it's going to have to come back to the resolution probably that created it. I think you've, you've got pretty strong support among the Board of Supervisors, the intent, that the intention is to, for long-term people in the community, regardless of land ownership or not, like I, I think we wouldn't limit it.
I just had a question on that.
I know, I'm just, I'm sharing my own personal opinion only for that.
But I mean, if it's stated somewhere and you get new board members that may not get up to date, I mean.
Possible.
So then maybe with this meeting, you all can make a recommendation to them, and then we can go through the process of having them update their resolution and then putting it back in here. If it's not a specific number you want to recommend, we can take that recommendation to them and have it formally updated in the resolution before it's updated.
That sounds like that, that sounds like that would work.
Well, you want to motion to table it till next month?
You're going to approve everything else if you want. That's, that's already, it already says the fifty percent.
Yeah, the fifty percent's already in there, so.
Anybody have a, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Motion made or second? Made in second. Any more discussion? No discussion, all in favor of the motion, making no say an eye? All opposed, same sign. Know of any other old business? It's not in the docket?
Sorry, did you vote to table it or did you vote to approve the amendments?
Vote to approve it as it is. And y'all would come back to y'all, if she was going to look for the resolution. Just my, I guess mainly making sure y'all are aware of the question we had in. All right, new business, the ordinance amendments, what's your pleasure on there? Any more discussion or motion to accept the update definitions? Any discussion? Get a motion to accept the updates? Motion made a second? Name second, any more discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, making no say an eye? Opposed, same sign, that'll be passed on to the Board of Supervisors, have to okay that too. All right, the next order of business is rezoning. The Amelia Avenue LLC, conditional rezoning from R one to R two. Is any questions before we get started? All right, you want to start speaking?
Yes.
Let's start some questions up.
Yep. So the subject property is eighteen point two six seven acres and located on the corner of Amelia Avenue and three sixty. The park was currently zoned R one, which is residential, but R one residential does not allow for multifamily, only R two residential. The rezoning is to rezone to R two for the purpose of developing twelve multifamily dwellings for a total of eighty-four apartment units. The apartment units would be a combination of one, two, and some three bedroom options as well. The comp plan designates this property as being located in the village development area. This area is characterized as being a location for higher density residential uses with an ideal density of four dwelling units for a single family and twelve dwelling units for multifamily. This request proposes a density of four point five nine dwelling units an acre, which falls within the perimeter suggested by the comp plan. During the comp plan process in twenty sixteen, residents were asked their input on locations for housing, and twenty percent of the respondents wanted to see apartments in locations that could be served by public utilities, and twenty-two percent desired townhomes in these areas. Page seven of the comp plan states that the most logical location for this type of dense residential development with public utilities is the Amelia Courthouse area where public water service exists. The R two zoning district that's proposed allows for a max of ten dwelling units per acre for a two-story building, and this falls within that perimeter as well. The applicant Amelia Avenue LLC is voluntary, voluntarily preferring a boulevard entrance. Prior to development, a traffic study satisfactory to the county and VDOT will be included. The development will contain landscaping, a clubhouse, a playground area, parking lot site lighting, and a landscaped and lit entrance with a monument sign. I did share this request with VDOT and Public Works. Daryl said the plans didn't have the specific water and sewer connections on there, but as far as capacity, there's no issue, we have the capacity to serve this, and as long as the Eastman is put in place so the county can clean it, he has no issue with the proposal. VDOT just had a few comments, the boulevard entrance doesn't meet their specs, it does meet county specs, but not, not VDOT's, so they would either have to have private roads or make a different option for entrance to the front. So those are all things that would have to be sorted out before VDOT can give us a deal of approval on this. And I have a copy of the comments from VDOT, if anybody wants to see them, I can pass those around. So this project is being modeled after an existing one in Colonial Heights, so I went out there last week and took some pictures so you all can see what it might look like. Sorry, I don't block them. So for anyone in the back who hasn't looked at it, this is the overall conceptual site plan that they're proposing. These are the proposed front elevations, so this is what it would look like. And then the rear. Okay, so this is the existing complex as Colonial Heights. So here are some of the units, and then this is the clubhouse leasing office. So I can leave any of these up here while you're talking if you think it'd be helpful.
Is it vinyl siding on the outside?
It is.
An asphalt roof?
Some brick, yeah.
Sir?
Sorry, what? I don't, I don't think so. No, I think that's probably the best I can do.
If you get out of slide mode, you might be able to.
Get out of slide mode?
Yeah. You're in PowerPoint?
They should be available on the county's website tomorrow also.
Okay.
Any materials presented during the meeting should be made available promptly to the county, to the citizens.
A control button and the addition button possibly?
That's not a PowerPoint, right?
Yeah.
It is?
It is, so when you share it through WebEx, it becomes a slide too, so if I stop sharing, they're not going to be able to see it.
It's possible. I'll try that.
It was suggested maybe we turn these lights off.
Think size there.
A little bit marginally?
Any discussion questions, Holly?
Holly, did I understand what you said, that it would be something like this or it would be like this?
It will be like that.
It will be like, yes.
How many total acres of eighteen acres is this development on?
I'm sorry, say that again.
How many acres of eighteen? All the apartments on? It doesn't say, you know, it's eighteen acres and look like it's maybe a third.
Yeah, it definitely just, like Rick, can you bring it up?
And are they going to do anything about the pond? Far as safety wise for people around? I mean, more people you put around a pond, more chance of possible damage. And the other question I had was the buffers around the side, is that going to be trees, fence, uh? Rubbery or what is that? Because I'm sure the people that own the big house right there just certainly don't want to be looking like straight in or people looking straight into them.
It would be a natural buffer, so.
Natural buffer. Other thing, is it any washers and dryers in the apartment? I noticed the clubhouse had a laundromat.
No, when Rick and I met last week, he said their attention was to have a laundry facility that might change once he gets his site plan processed, if he can fit to wash or dry this end unit. But as of right now, the laundry facility is proposed in the front.
Other question I had from VDOT. If VDOT turns down the entrance, it's turned over from a R one to R two, does it come back to us or they can do as they please? Once it goes R two, it's R two.
That doesn't, I mean, that would make the site plan dead in the water, they wouldn't be able to do what they're proposing, but.
Not just, but they could do anything else for R two.
They would remain R two, that's correct.
I've never seen VDOT take over an interest to an apartment complex or anything, I don't know that they would take that setup. I don't know, not being up to their specifications is a little killer because they're not, they're just going to make a little loop even if they took it.
They would be more concerned by the ingress, egress.
Right. Well, you'd have to have site distance installed either way, you're going to get your interest permit.
Anyone else ask a question?
May I ask one, soft top?
Sure.
So related to the study, so this says prior to development, a traffic study will be completed, it doesn't say then that they'll comply, I mean, is that all the same, I haven't done a traffic study before, is that all one and the same? It reads like you could just do the study and then move on, whether they, whether VDOT liked it or not.
Oh no, VDOT, that's, that's one of VDOT's comments.
They have to sign off on it.
Yeah.
He's got to give it, he's going to have permit to put that interest in.
Okay, but that's not what this, my, my point is, it's not what this says, this, this just says a study will be done.
But, but the width and the site distance and all that for their, their permit for the entrance is going to be based on the amount of traffic that comes out through there.
Okay.
Based on the traffic study.
Right, and the number one, the fir, first comment from VDOT is that a traffic impact analysis is required due to the increase in traffic generated by this development, because Amelia Avenue is a rural major collector road of one thousand, indicating a significant traffic volume increase and a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour with the addition of eighty-four units.
But did state anything they like? Well, that'd be on the study, I guess, if he needed like to get in and out.
Right, that, exactly, that would come from the study.
So when another complex was proposed here before, there were comments about needing a desiring sidewalks and lighted, lights along that path, I don't see anything related to that, has there been any discussion?
Lights around in the apartment, I think.
It is, right, in, in the parking lots, but not, no sidewalks or lighted paths connecting to the courthouse, right?
Wouldn't be connecting to the courthouse.
Okay.
See, I think that's important because you're going to have people walking up to the courthouse, whether they're walking for their health or coming up to the door or whatever, and those are narrow little streets down there with no sidewalks. I'd really prefer to see a sidewalk from development to the corner of Amelia Avenue and Court Street and reach up to business three sixty, from there on there, sidewalks across the street. And so, I mean, because this, that's a narrow little street, Court Street especially, there's a narrow little street down there.
And then there's still the question about the railroad track. You know, we discussed that last time. They might have a sidewalk getting to the railroad track.
And then pick it up on the other sidewalk.
Yeah, and then pick it up on the other side.
And it's not that much distance that down there, probably six or seven hundred feet, probably.
Would that be in the VDOT study?
I doubt it.
All they're going to do is entrance and traffic.
Unless, unless they have indications, there'll be a lot of pedestrian traffic, and then they may include it, yeah.
With that many units, you kind of understood it.
Could there be any discussion about propering something on the sidewalk?
Yes, he put that as a proffer.
Sidewalk? Sidewalk? That's what I just asked.
Sidewalk, it's in the village.
In the apartment.
To the village.
That's, that's what we're asking.
That's what we're, we're talking about.
Yeah, sorry, I thought you were talking in general. No, there's not been any discussion about propering.
But even that, where's, where in here is the, you're, so you're talking internal sidewalks, all right? I don't see that in the proffer list.
I think it's on the site plan, I think.
Yeah, I don't. Well, that's fine, but there will, site plan is a site plan, I mean, once we rezone it, they can do it as they want.
That is true.
No, it's not listed in the, in the proffers at all.
I'm assuming. I'm assuming.
The pedestrian lane, they're taking it back to the courthouse.
Interconnectivity back to the.
Because you know these people are gonna be walking up there. Kids or somebody, somebody will be walking down. There's going to be a little, a lot of red lights.
There's no logical reason to have apartments like close to the village.
Very narrow.
You've got a group of five or six kids, you've got a couple of cars, and you got, could have potential disaster.
It's dangerous, actually.
I would also like to go back to Larkin's comment about the pond. That's something that I have been, every time I go by there, it crosses my mind, you had thirty, forty, fifty, sixty little kids running around. What will they do about that pond?
Railroad tracks concern me too.
Railroad tracks, of course, concerns me.
Without a fence or something, you know, as they cross the fence, it's kind of like a lagoon at home, you know, you gotta have a fence around it.
Yeah.
That way they have to crawl a fence across the gate and be able to sue you.
How big is the pond?
Must not be very big, I'd say. I don't know.
I see the outline, I didn't.
An acre and a half?
Yeah, maybe.
All right, so it's.
It's five acres in there.
Paracent to the buildings, I mean, it's about the size of all the buildings together.
Have two acres, maybe.
I, I walked around it a lot. I know it allows it to stop large.
I'm simply basing all the drawings, I'm simply basing them on drawings.
But that's to scale. I don't think that's that big.
That would shock me that you got official planning drawings from the engineers if it's not, but.
Well, it could be waters coming in. It might be.
Could be the watershed, maybe.
Not so much the pond itself.
That could be. It's definitely not clear. Well, we were pointing to the actual portion that says pond, not the RPA.
And I assume they have to have a pretty good ENS plan with that pond that close and that stream actually.
They would.
Yeah, anything over 10,000 square feet of disturbance has to have an ENS plan and this is a lot more.
They use it.
Anybody else have comments? I'm still trying to get comments. Any more comments or questions? I don't have any comments. I'll public here enough.
All right, I have a, I have a whole stack. Okay. My name is Connaughton, and I live at 16502 Amelia Avenue. I have reviewed the plans and would like to state my opposition to this development. This is just a smaller version of the last proposal, which the county objected to previously. My concerns are still the same, even if they did add a playground and a clubhouse. I feel the acreage of land is too small for this size development. Also, it's wedged between two busy thoroughfares, creating safety issues. I'm also concerned about infrastructure and services which have to be provided by the county. I have lived in a rural area most of my life, and this plan to me just does not fit into a rural setting. Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Stewart, and I live at 16500 Amelia Avenue. I have looked at the plans for these units and still have the same concerns that I had when I attended the last meeting. I think it's too much stress on the county as far as services and not having people vested in the community long term. Thank you for listening. Dear Ms. Steele, I thank you for providing the important information on the above resuming case to be heard on April 26th. I own two adjacent parcels of land on the north side of Amelia Avenue, near Route 360. I'm sorry that I'm unable to attend the meeting, but I have reviewed the proposed plan, which you sent for your email. Listed below are comments and concerns, which I feel the taxpayers of Amelia County will need answers to before the resuming can be approved. Does the county currently have an adequate water supply with reserves for consumption and for fire protection for this proposed apartment complex? Does this use comply with the current proposed plan for business along 360? How are our schools going to be impacted by the influx of new students? Is our current fire department equipped to handle a large fire or emergency in this apartment complex? The Norfolk Southern Rail Line runs along the southern portion of the subject. How will this impact the apartment community as this railroad transports hazardous materials? Are all the units going to be constructed with non-combustible, major structural building components? This is a recommendation. Are all of the units in the clubhouse going to be fully sprinkled? This is also a recommendation. All units should be equipped with smoke detection systems that should be monitored off-site by a reputable alarm company. This is also a recommendation. I ask these questions as the taxpayers deserve to know all the short and long-term impacts before resuming can be granted. Fire and life safety are a major concern. If these concerns are addressed, I have no problem with the resuming. Sincerely, Olin Hardison. Hi Roger, I will not be able to attend the rezoning meeting this week, but I have some thoughts regarding the zoning change request approved in the apartment complex that will eventually house approximately 300 individuals in Amelia. I would like to raise two main concerns that the county should consider before rezoning this project and other future project approvals for building large-scale apartment complexes in the county. One of the reasons we and most others like living in Amelia is that we don't have a large concentration of people living in the county. Now that there is a significant crisis of illegal aliens coming into the United States due to the current open border policies of the US government, what steps can the county take to ensure that Amelia does not become an attractive place to resettle these individuals? Before approving large-scale housing developments, I recommend the county develop a mitigation plan prior to giving approval for large-scale public housing apartments so that we mitigate the risk of relocating non-US citizens to Amelia County. Please keep in mind these relocated individuals will not be materially vetted and have a high potential for criminal ties as human trafficking organizations were involved in getting most of the individuals into the United States in the first place. Relying solely on the company owning the building complex to give assurance without any contractual obligations is only asking for potential issues down the road. Number two, given that the county has no experience in setting tax rates for large public housing developments, how can we ensure that the tax revenues from the property fully fund the services of police, EMS, public schools, et cetera, so that other households in the county are not subsidizing the county services provided to residents of a large-scale apartment development? The simplest way to determine this would be to determine the total county real estate tax revenues and number of individuals in the county and see if the amount per individual is more or less based on the expected tax revenue from the apartment complex and the number of individuals in the complex and house. A review of the apartment complex's actual tax revenues would then need to be made periodically to true-ups so that we can ensure that county residents are not unduly subsidizing the public services by, used by large-scale apartment residences. Thank you for addressing these concerns. Paul White. Okay, he also had another one, but it said basically the same thing that one said with some additions of, is this a planned community of 55 and older, or can anyone live in the apartments? Are any of the planning commissioners or others making the rezoning decision involved with Amelia Avenue LLC as a shareholder? What level of involvement is the federal or state government involved in? That covers it. That's, that's my list.
Anyone else like to speak? State your name and address. That's all our requests.
Is he, is the gentleman that's wanting?
Up to him.
It's up to him. Okay, well, I'll just say something.
Just state your name and address so that Janet can get it.
My name's Lori Southall. I'm at 16731. And it's good seeing you all again. Same topic, but good questions tonight, like you've been thinking about it. And I want to say to Holly, I came up and spoke to Holly and asked some questions to her about this situation because I, after our last meeting, I really thought, to use an expression, it was dead in the water. When we walked out, everybody was talking and you're like, oh no. But evidently with some changes, and maybe the question is change of ownership. Do you, sir, do you own that land then?
We have a contract. With the, except getting, if we can get site plan approval and building.
So you're the new, you're going to be the new one? So if this were to not pass, you wouldn't buy it? Is that what you're saying? Or you're gonna buy it?
No, no, I would have, I would have the game.
Okay, good, good, good. Okay, so my thought, I have, like, certain things keep coming back to me. And everybody's brought it up. First of all, is this traffic study? Why on earth a traffic study isn't done first? And then we say where, where that leads. Anybody?
And then a call to the Holly.
Yes.
You know, right now, traffic study is, is going to be part of the site plan approval process. Right now, the discussion is whether we can build apartments and accept it to the town, which I'm trying to do as, as intended to the town. I was thinking, but, yeah, some of the, what I've got, I don't know if it is. So I was trying to do the best I can with the town, to, to offer, and maybe try to keep some of their families here in town. It's, you know, I live in Richmond. It's from, you know, Holstrey. It's, you know, twenty minutes away. It's, 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 it's convenient and to be able to have that. And I think the, the pictures that you saw, it was a project that I built twenty-three years ago, or I'm getting traded, I think, developing also. And that project I did, it was down there from upstate New York. And that's twenty-three year old, twenty-three years old, that, that project. Very nice, as it is, the way it is, it goes by the signings and grid, asphalt, angle, and just, just those things for that, you know, to, to build itself. But as far as the traffic study, the, as it comes through with the, and that's one of the requirements for VDOT, you know, it's, it's not a traffic study for, for rezoning, but it may impact for that, but it's part of the site plan approval. So VDOT's gonna tell us, okay, we got this, this many cars coming through, they're going to do a thirty-day or sixty-day study. And they'll come in and they'll do their recommendation through the site plan approval. So once this gets through this, and then I guess it's another meeting, if it goes through tonight. And then once the site plan approval goes through, or the process of it, we have to amend by all VDOT standards. So they may make us put a turn lane in coming in, they may make us put a turn lane going out from the project. To, so, you know, there's, there's some, certainly some big costs involved in, in those things. So, you know, it, it may not work for us if VDOT comes in. We have projects that sometimes it's just not viable for the things that they want. So, so those are some of the things that impact that whole site plan approval.
Okay, okay, thank you. So we just heard that it has to come second? Is that what everybody heard?
What?
That the, that the VDOT comes second. Is that what, that's what bottom line is? It can't come first.
It depends. Most of the time, like, the last time they came here, they had nothing.
Right.
Other than they were on 132 apartments. We don't deal with anything, we don't see something. So they're, they're so far ahead this time from time before.
Yeah.
But normally, we do have a VDOT, okay, before we make it.
A book.
A commit.
Good, good word. Okay, okay.
Well, we both poured up, but before we make a commitment, we have a VDOT sign letter that says they've looked at this. But it's not something that this major on major highways, normally it's, you know, need a turn-in lane or more entrance coming in, you know, for development off of a a back road or, not a back road, but a smaller highway.
The traffic study will have to be done and the plans change to meet their specifications before it can, the site plan can be approved.
Well, the other two, my, my other two issues are sort of related to this, and we talked about this last one. I personally oppose it. I think it couldn't be, but, I'm sorry to you. I think it's the worst idea I've ever heard of, but. But, good. But only, but only because of its location and how huge, 300 people in that little square of land, 300 people, and that's what, we were, we were trying to do some math and it could be more. Maybe your family's, 300 people in that little square of land would affect what we call the village. And, you know, my friends, they, when I talk about, oh, my, this is where I used to live, this is, I lived in the village across from Methodist Church and, you know, and sitting out and watching people get married and, you know, things like that. And they're like, what do you call it? And I say, that's what they call it. It's, they're like, it's like a little town. I'm like, well, it's, it's really different. And, and the walking, like you said, like people walking all over. I walk from where I live, which is across 360. Across 360, I walk up with, what you were talking about, that nasty little, and, you know, I jump in the, the ditches and come up into town so I can walk the village and go visit my relatives at the cemetery. And, you know, so I think between me, I think this is what the impact of the village, the schools, these are all these, we're talking about young people. And I asked Holly, and I said, Holly, why is this even a thing? Why are we talking about this? She said, well, you know, there's just not a lot of places for young people to live and rent. And I said, but I don't think that's their goal. I don't think people from Chesterfield are want to come and live in a little apartment house in Amelia. I don't think people from Blackstone want to come to Amelia and live in a little apartment. I just don't think that's why people come to Amelia. I think people come to Amelia because they want their little space and their privacy and their breathing. Anyway, so those are my, those are my thoughts. And I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? For events, just state your name and address. That's all we ask.
I've just been listening. My name is Jim Hicks. Everybody knows me. Live at 166 Monroe Avenue. Been there for, I mean, even thirty-six years now. I'm looking at this, looking at this myself personally from business standpoint. So I've got some questions about. The one thing that came up, I'm not quite clear about, is that when they, will there be an entrance off 360? Not gonna happen.
No, you can't have it.
I just want to clarify that because that's, that's what I heard. And, and then when you read the thing about state highway department saying, recommend another entrance. Did I hear that correctly? They're gonna make some recommendations about where to do some other entrance.
What they would recommend, whether the road has to be wider, if they'd have to have a turn-in lane to get in, a turn-lane to get out, and if it'd be lights. That's normally what they would say.
We came here in the last meeting, the sales pitch is all these people have come from Pickett. You folks remember? My question is, where are these people gonna be coming from? Is the rent gonna be so competitive? That they're gonna come out here and save three or $100 a month as opposed to being Chesterfield? How much of the rent's gonna be? Do you have any idea of what, what these units are rented for? I mean, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what rents are in Chesterfield, but I'm sure that's pretty close to what's down there. Amelia has needed rental, rental properties. We, wife and I own several Xs and there's no problem renting, renting our properties. So from the standpoint of rentals, we need it. However, where, where are these people gonna come from? Are they gonna afford nine to $1,100 a month rents? Is it gonna be government subsidized? And it was, in one of these letters, I heard somebody say, so they bought immigrants. And it was, in one of these letters, I heard somebody say, so they bought immigrants. We gotta be careful. What's going on in that political environment? I don't know. We're gonna get discrimination and all that stuff, and I wouldn't want to be part of that. We live very close to this, where this is gonna go. I just don't know. I won't know till it's put in, and it's too late. So I think it's smart, what you're doing. I'm glad to be a part of it, to listen to your comments. Anything we can do to help the county, whoever, we're here to do that. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Valentine, so is all. I would address my wife, too. Share her concern. I have a couple of questions more than any of you probably know, and I, it's been so long since I had anything to do with the law involving zoning and any of that, that I don't really answer to it. But if in fact, you don't, you know, these conditions that are being proposed, are they legally binding? And is that a condition? And if they don't meet the conditions, then it's not gonna happen? Or is there some loophole, once you get it rezoned, you can then say, well, you know, we didn't need that requirement, we could do something else? And apartments are fine, but, I mean, that's, it seems to me, it's right bang, right loose if you're gonna just look at a bunch of apartments and calling it lights and say, well, that's what we're gonna look like here, maybe. But I don't know, I don't know that you know, and maybe never do when you deal with this kinda, this kinda situation. But to me, the most obvious problem is the access. And to me, you know, that road is narrow, it can be windy, but I don't think they would require, the highway department would require that they, well, you know, I represented the highway department fifty years ago, so I'm not up on that either. But there's a very little distance between the, even the, what's that? I guess it's not the northernmost, but anyway, the village end of that property and the passing lines. And if you got people that commute, if you're talking about people in Chesterfield gonna come move over here, and they're gonna be commuting to their work, it's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna add a whole lot, which seems to me unwise from a transportation sample. That's, to me, I mean, I have personal feelings about it, because I do think it's incompatible with what we have now, the rural, kind of rural, not urban, but certainly a village atmosphere. It's incompatible with that, but I know things change, and so that's, that's just personal. But I do think from the standpoint of transportation and access to where most people would be going, toward three sixty, it's gonna be a difficult one. So, I'm talking to my wife and the pool.
I can tell, Valentine, the proffers that they bring up, they have to back them up, and Holly checks them.
But what happens if?
They have to have them before they can get to.
Okay, but what happens if the, if they don't get the highway department approval? If he's bought the property, it's got.
If he doesn't get the highway department approval, I mean, that's his problem, not ours.
Well, it's his problem, but then does nothing happens? The land just lies there?
It'll stay there, probably. Or he probably won't buy it.
By the way, I don't know whether his contract, and of course, he's gonna have to tell us that, I'll tell you all that, but, I don't know, his contract's contingent on just this, or getting all the approvals, or whatever, you know, it's, you know, that's.
But I think the problem that you're highlighting is the same one that I have with the, this traffic study. All of those things are after we've done the rezoning. So if we rezone, and then you later decide the traffic study is more than you want to comply with, et cetera, we're already locked in. We've done the rezoning, and it's too, it's too late for us to come back on it. And so the proffers are the same, the same way. I guess if, if this proceeds forward, those proffers are legally binding. If he abandons this project, we've already rezoned it, someone else comes in, the proffers are no longer obligated.
Applicable, that's the question.
I agree, I, I agree with you.
Okay, that's, thank you very much for your panel.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Process probably, that's not.
Just state your name, address.
Cause you don't even believe that, so they do.
I'm Brian Culver, and I live at sixteen six oh five Amelia, the property adjacent to this. Couple, really just a couple of questions. Personally, start off, I'm not in favor of it, but I don't know how much difference that makes. However, I know the question was asked, that buffer, what is in that buffer? What makes up that buffer? And I didn't hear the answer to that.
It just says a natural buffer.
What does that mean?
The trees that are there.
Whatever's there now.
Whatever's there now.
Correct. Grass, naturally, they don't move down.
So we'll have a, we could possibly have parking right next to our land.
Be fifty feet, be fifty foot. He'd have to leave trees fifty footer.
Plant trees or let trees grow there.
Okay.
I don't see anything so far. I see a fifty-foot setback, not a requirement that has to be planted in something. So you need to say natural.
I ask.
Yeah, I know.
Questions I ask.
I agree with you, I'm just saying it don't see it documented somewhere, I think that's.
Not documented.
Naturally grass.
I think it should be a buffer, a natural buffer there, on that easement.
All right, setback. Any other question?
Well, for, for what it's worth, I definitely would prefer to have some sort of a vertical buffer. Again, not probably very much. The other question is the lighting in there. And, and I guess really it would be, do you know, do you know the height of your lighting? How much lighting you're expecting to put in there?
I guess I have to find out what the worst is, because in Amelia, you know, we could do some wall foot, you know, carriage light just something around, and I'm gonna plan on putting maybe twenty-five foot lights and lighting up the whole thing. But that's, that's something that would have to be part of the site plan approval also, what's submitted, you know, we can, if we wanted to say that we're not gonna put these big holes, but you know, accounting that, boom, there are requirements that you can, you know, you can, like, so that always comes in. The landscape or site plan approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we already added a property to a natural buffer, or just adjoining land or.
I'd put it.
It should be on this side and this side.
I'd make it more specific, even like spool screening or something, you know, there's gotta be some kind of language.
Hold, hold, she's ready to speak.
My name's Carol Hicks, one six six one zero Amelia Avenue. My biggest concern with this is Amelia Avenue. It's not wide, there is no, you know, there, there's nothing on the side of the road, it's just the road itself. Now, if the VDOT, this VDOT study is done, and these people are told that they have to have turn lanes, are they gonna be able to take my property from me to make turn lanes? To widen, well, I should say, to widen Amelia Avenue?
That's old three sixty through there, and there should be a wide enough right-of-way in there to build to accommodate them.
So they could take my land?
No.
They would already own the land.
They already own the land.
So what she has is her land could already be.
In fact, there.
That's what they're saying, yeah.
No, VDOT, if that's, if that was a major highway, they would have so many feet off the center of that highway. They have access to it, whether you assume it's yours or not, right now.
The original three sixty, six to six feet right-of-way, thirty-three feet each, each side of the center. So that would be planning to be able to put.
Amelia Avenue is, that's old three sixty to me.
Right, sixty-six foot right-of-way.
Thirty-three feet from the center of the road.
Yeah, it's from the center of the road.
Or center of the, thirty-three feet, center of the road. I'm pretty sure.
So then they could, take it on my, the wall that's there, the fence that's there, and take all my bushes and everything, and then I would be exposed with nothing between my house and three sixty, I mean, Amelia Avenue?
We wouldn't know. VDOT would have to answer that. We don't, we don't know.
It's the right-of-way, it truly is, dude, there is sixty-six feet.
Yeah, that's not three sixty, though.
Amelia Avenue is old, old three sixty.
Sixty-six is old, what happened with three sixty something, nineteen thirty-eight?
Yeah. So it may not be six.
It may not be sixty-six feet, but either way, i- if your, if your wall and trubs are on VDOT's right-of-way, it's theirs anyway.
But I.
I think you don't wanna lose it, but I would, if it's, if it's.
I understand that for Amelia, well.
I wouldn't think it.
I wouldn't think.
I wouldn't think that, personally, I wouldn't think, when that, when that was put in there, I assume it was not on VDOT, whenever they built the house.
Because my, the land that I, that where my house is, is where Mrs. Hart was, originally Mrs. Hart's land, it's her, her fence that goes through, that's still there.
So I'm assuming that.
So you assume that that, from her fence, is back, is my, is mine.
You can look at your plat, though, right? And, yeah, I think you can look at your plat, and, and you'll be able to know the specifics of where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Said it might be wise. I don't think the widen up here, I think it might widen here.
Yeah, the major traffic would be coming this way to three sixty. If they do any widen, it'd have to be there.
I would think so, too.
Anybody else like to speak?
I'm going into the village, I don't think.
I don't wanna hold anybody back before I speak.
Yeah, you can speak.
Should I put my mask on?
Uh, I guess you're okay. You're six foot away from most of them. You better pull your tape out.
I'm, I'm Rick Mere, the North South Construction and Amelia Avenue LLC, proposing to build this apartment project. This is a personal project for myself, it's not out to, to build and, and to sell. I do develop and, and I own a, we do sixty-seven million dollars worth of construction. We do a lot of hospitality work and so forth, and this is just something that we've, I've talked to a few people and heard there is a need, you know, we, you know, we're, I'm, I'm in, in a, in a mode where we're taking a gamble also, because I'm not quite sure how, however, things are gonna come in the air, you know, we're gonna, that's probably seven million dollars to, to put this project up and running and, and to try to get it phased in, because what we end up doing would be just coming in and we would do the, you know, the clubhouse and first, maybe four, four buildings, and see how it works. You know, we'll still put the infrastructure in and everything, we'd have to, regardless, we would have to put all the infrastructure in for the cabin, you know, we'd have to have the storm sewer and everything else, the VDOT entrances if it's required, whatever storm sewer we have to do to clean up for the, the BMP, because we'll be using the existing pond that's, that's out there. We will protect the pond somehow with, with either a fence, or however we gotta do it, or fence the perimeter of the, the outside of the building, because, you know, it's a thing that, you know, I've, I've grandkids, I have kids, and the, the, the whole thing that's, that's there. So that's, that's one thing that is, would be a concern of mine also. The water and sewer is there, you know, it gets sewer that's down at the lower part of the, the pond that's accessible to us. You know, there's some studies there, Daryl's been very helpful with me with getting the, the information that I need for the utilities to make sure it works, and so it looks like everything's gravity fit. And it's just, it's just something that, it's something that I, I'm gonna keep, it's not gonna be for that, you know, it's gonna be hopefully a retirement for me, and, and I'll be personally attached to it, where it's gonna be, you know, our building that we'll maintain. You know, we're gonna hire, you know, a couple of people from, from town as, you know, for maintenance and, and have a, the office, run the office and, and the management portion of it and so forth, and, and having it there, you know, the landscaper, locally landscapers to, to maintain the property. And I, I just think, and I really think this is the, I, I don't know Amelia as much as we, well, years ago, we built the, the hotel, and I don't know what kind of friction or whatever that did on that, but the Amelia Hotel, we, we built that for the, for the owner on that, so. The, the buildings, there was a couple of comments that the buildings will be sprinkled, we are bringing, you know, water, so that we'll have hydrants and everything up to date for that, there'll be fire safety. The reason we have the, the road as it is, it's looped around, so fire trucks can get around and do what they have to do for, for life safety. I don't, and, you know, and it's a, it's a way to maybe your kids or your grandkids or, you know, move to Chesterfield or Midlothian because it's not a place to live, or maybe this is something that they can come here and stay and, and live for a couple of years and, and save some money. All these are for rent, and it's not a monthly, they're a year, year lease project. That's just one thing that we're not just, you know, rotating and bringing people in every month and, and coming from there. So, you know, it's, you know, we're gonna have requirements that, you know, I, I'm not gonna put somebody in there that's not gonna pay the rent, so.
For the land's proposal, they, they were talking about building to accommodate these fast seat people in Fort, Fort Pickett, and they were gonna be here three or four weeks and be gone. You're not, you look.
No, it's a yearly.
You're just permanent people.
Yeah, this is to raise a family, and to have that, to, to be able to have that and, have the landscape and have the clubhouse, you know, it gives the, the people the opportunity and the apartments to, you know, have birthday parties or, or things like that, they can, you know, sign out for the, the clubhouse, you know, just having some gatherings, and so that gives the opportunity for something like that to, to be, to be able to offer and, and just something to generate on that, on that part. You know, it's, it's very early stages, it's, there, there's a lot to be studied and a lot to be, to, to be worked on, of course, you know, and it's, but this is the, the way for us to, to move forward, and I understand where everybody is, you know, if it gets R2, it gets R2, and if, if the things aren't, you know, viable, or VDOT just, you know, makes us put a traffic signal across three sixty, that's, you know, that, you know, that's, that's five hundred thousand dollars that you would have to do that, so that, things like that would be, I can't imagine they would do that.
Would you be willing to put a sidewalk from your development up to this is three sixty?
That's, it's probably, I, I drove it today before I came, because I thought that would maybe something that would be there. The drainage and everything is, you know, because everything comes down there. So we would have to put culverts all the way across, fill it in, and then put the sidewalks in. It'd be very expensive to, to do, and it's something that, you know, I, I don't know if I could do that as, as a, this, to, to proffer that, because I, I haven't studied it enough to.
Right.
To know how much it would cost.
It's just, I'm sure you have some, some pedestrian traffic. And that's, that's a narrow dangerous road, that's, that's my, oh, it's, it is, there's people walking on the side of the road, and people trying to get over the mistletoe, and other people coming down the street, I don't know, it's a busy little area.
I love on a road like that now, and I know that's what it said.
You know, one of the things that we keep trying to visualize is, so, eighty-four houses, each mom and dad going working. So that's hundred sixty, hundred sixty cars coming out of there somewhere between like seven-thirty and eight o'clock. All, every single one of them turning left and then turning right on three sixty, probably head towards Chesterfield, towards Ridgefield. And I can't imagine, well, it'd be like a parade of, I just can't even imagine how that could happen, because people are also driving into the village, you know, school buses, A and L, and, and, and all the employees, all the schools, those, those are, I think, are major, or yours. Taking that right. While these guys are going left out of your, that's my, that's what goes with that. Which is an overpass.
I just, and that's.
Get proper. He doesn't have to be.
You, you are, you are gonna have. It's gonna be from seven to, to nine, and probably four to six.
You can have a market study.
I don't.
Really awe, and Amelia County is giving talks.
I have not.
I mean, I know.
Yeah, it's kind of a, I broke.
Go back to.
We're open a thousand, five thousand. I know, like.
Most people.
You want.
Multi-family.
What else can be done with this?
Yes. So it's, we're having a bright. The number of kids will get five or five. It's a lot. A lot more than it's for sure, yes.
Yeah, for some of our bodies. Yeah. Two lives, kids. That, I, I, I don't have, but I would say if you would probably introducing maybe, well, there's going to be some people that are living here now that I'm hoping is what we're going to get that are already in the school system generated. But so it may, it may, if it was people from, from out of the area coming in and moving in. You know, with the two bedroom to the three bedroom, there's, there's twenty, twenty and, and sixty. Now it's not like that. Forty, twenty-two and twenty-two. Is what the, uh, the, the dreams are for the, the twenty-two, three bedroom, twenty-two, one bedroom and, and forty, two bedroom. So if you, if you took that average, maybe two kids per, uh, a unit, maybe, maybe a hundred and fifty kids or something, if that would be a.
I think you probably will see more older people than.
I, I think so.
You propose this road, the roads, don't propose that it be part of the state system.
Not the internal, let's be private.
Well, the, the school buses wouldn't go into a private road to pick kids up. So you'd have a, uh, you'd have a school bus stop. It sounds like this thing, but it's a question, you would have to have a school bus stop on Amelia Avenue. Would that be accurate?
How it's.
You got that made.
They'd have to be correct.
And I would think they would have to have like a stop farther closer to the village than stopping at your entrance and backing up traffic all the way up to the flashing lights.
They would probably come in the entrance Boulevard to pick up the kids and go back out.
A lot of departments do, do that. They, they'll come into the building and come around and then have their, they're facing the buses way as the kids come through.
Oh, really? We don't know this.
Yeah, that's.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah.
I want to ask you a question about how confident you, that you're going to be able to fill these up? Are you gazing at by the growth in Chesfield? Uh, or just, you just taking a risk?
I'm taking a risk.
Great a risk here.
But it is, and, and I, you know, I'm, I'm a risk taker and it's just something I feel like, I, I feel confident.
Because of the growth in Chesfield or?
Um, just the, the growth in general of what's out there. I just, I, I, I just feel that.
To somewhat address the issue, and, and this may be politically incorrect, but to address the issue of immigrants coming in, they're accustomed to living twelve, fourteen in the one bedroom apartment. Will you have some kind of?
We have that to say, you, you could only have one, you know.
But you would have to say yes.
That would be the least and you have to, you can only have that. You can't have over what I can't, I can't remember what the age is or you could just in our own personal families and you're raising kids. You can't have, you know, your brother and sister just living in the same room for until fifth grade. Well, I, I don't know that much. It's, that, that I can't control or we could monitor it and, and I, I just don't think that's, you know, a, a, a fair assumption to, 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 to say that, I guess. It's something that, and, and we do have, you know, there, there is the, that issue. Um, I can't speak of it.
But what I'm asking is, will you have some type of wordage in your contracts that puts a cap on how many people can live in a unit?
But it's, it's based on, um, the, the, the current law. And so you have to.
But you would have to enforce it.
Yes, absolutely. And that would be our leasing agent or whoever would be doing that and making sure and finding out who's coming here and there, you know, it's a.
I think you would find that's more prevalent than you realize.
You're not building these to sell. You're building, I mean to sell the whole, the whole project. You're building it for you to keep it indefinitely.
Okay. I got young kids that are in the business with me and so we can just pass it on and hopefully do it and.
Do you still own the, um, department complex that you built twenty-three?
No, I, I built that for another, um, developer. I was the con, I was the contractor for it. I was not the developer.
Have you ever?
So the, the reason I, I, I use that as an example because, um, certainly saving some money on redoing drawings because I could redo these drawings and update them to the, to the current specs. And it's a project that I work with, with Waldorf Associates a lot with and they're doing a civil. So they said, okay, well, well, you know, we can get discounted. You, we can, you can reuse these drawings and, and do it that way.
Have you ever considered looked into doing it as a fifty-five and ever community? That's a stout need out here and a community like that would pretty much eliminate all the complaints. Everybody's complaining about the traffic, the buses, the need for sidewalks, the need to have the pond.
People want more than the kids do probably.
But that, but that's a need, that's a.
It's, it's, it's a, but those would be for sale, I would say. I don't think people are going to, you know, for, to.
Yeah, condos.
Condos and it would be to that way. And you wouldn't, you know, you could probably get the, maybe the yield, but if you use the, the footprint of, of what we have now, you know, you could turn these, these things into condos and we could have, you know, forty-two condos and do it that way. But I, I don't know if, you know, with stairs and things like that for fifty-five and older, they don't want to get up. They want the flat and, you know, I just built a new house. It's all a story, so.
When you talk about fun house, I think I misunderstood. It's just a, it, there's no solution.
No, no, no.
See, I was thinking, well, okay, maybe somebody would want to live in Amelia that lived, wanted to live in an apartment. Because when I talk to people like colleagues, young, young teachers, I'm like, where are you living? And they say, oh, I'm living in a, tell me that apartment complex in Chesfield. It's got a great pool, it's got a weight room, it's got, and they go through the whole thing. I'm like, good God, awesome. It's a, you know, party club and, um, but the, and, and they're like, I, I look and I'm thinking still, those people aren't going to want to come here because you're given on the clubhouse.
Yeah.
And a laundry room. It's just not adjustable.
Yeah. I'm, I'm thinking more for the, for the local people and, and, and be able to, to, to attract, to attract that.
How many phases are you anticipating? I mean, it's not going to be a full build out at once. What's your?
It would probably be the, the first two, it'll be the four buildings plus the clubhouse coming in. Then we'll have to do the infrastructure coming in and then, uh, because we'll still have to continue that loop to make sure for the, to maintain for the, the fire department and everything that would have to come through to be able to get in and out. So it would be those two last buildings towards the pond and the one furthest to the rear would probably be the last two buildings.
Okay.
So you kind of starting at stages and see how much, how many people will be coming in. That would determine whether you thought you would justify to do the next one.
You know, we're going to finance it for the, for the, for the whole.
Any more questions? Any more questions for him or any more questions before he says to him?
Would you have closed the door on this, the sidewalk thing up to this is three sixty? I mean, I think, I think it's a safety issue. Then V dot, they, under the county pushed it a few years ago. Some of this, that's for the interconnectivity stuff. And they added a bunch of sidewalks around and, and I think V dot he'll bring some of that, didn't they?
Yeah, they covered part of it.
They covered part of that. You may be able to look at something like that.
How about Amelia?
I'm not super ready yet, I know these guys.
You know, this is something the young, well, you, you know, given things, you know, that's, it's probably eight, nine hundred feet, um, going across and I guess you're still going to have to go across the railroad or whatever.
I'd be, I think they've got a wider paved area there where they're crossing is. You probably pave up to the edge of it and.
Well, they, they have, you can't do anything within, they have fifty feet center for their. Yeah, whatever, for their, for their thing that you can't go in there. The, the biggest thing is, is, is the drainage thing because it's five ditches that come. If I'm not mistaken. So we would have to, like I said, put culverts in there and fill it in and put the sidewalk over top of it. So it's a, quite a cost, yeah.
I was just saying for, for the safety board. Because you know, people are going to walk.
Yeah. I, you know, I could. I, I don't want to add that right now, but it could be something that could be considered and it's something you guys are going to be reviewing the site plan and it may be a condition of the, of the site plan that we have to, you know, do something for that. But, um, I just, I just don't want to price ourselves out of, of doing this, of being able to do. I, I, I think we are offering a nice product and, and, and a useful product here. So, um, in longevity wise, I think it's, it's, it's going to fit okay with the, it'd fit well with the, the community and, and hopefully.
One, one other thing. Mr. Culver had mentioned wanting some sort of a, you get your fifty foot setback there you can't build in. Would you be willing to entertain that fifty foot natural buffer if we left around when you ended joining landowners?
Nothing will be, fifty feet from that property line, nothing can be cut down. Okay, so whatever's there is there.
Okay, and because of the plant, she was sitting back, then showed us a buffer.
No, we, we can label it as a buffer. Okay, we're not, we don't plan on taking it, any trees out that we, you know, the rest of the stuff is all going to be staying the same. And, you know, and, and for the pond itself, you know, it's, it's, you know, I know you guys, you, you talked about the, the safety and everything like that. We are opening it up because we are getting a little closer, but it's very well overgrown in there. I, I walked this last week and I walked it again tonight before the meeting. And, um, I'm not quite sure what kind of fencing, you know, if, if a fence needed to be around it or how, how it would be protected because you got the railroad that comes off the backside also. And, um, so that's just something that would have to be, you know, and then, and safety for, for children is, is, is a priority, no doubt, no doubt in my mind and that, and that, so. You know, to put a four foot chain like fence around it, it's not, it's not a deal breaker or anything to, to do it. We had to do.
They want to get in, they go.
They're going to get in regardless.
Yeah, it's more like the accidental, yeah.
Any more questions before I close the public here? Hearing done, I'll close the public here. Come back. Thank you. All right, come back to the commission members. You have any more questions? Or idea to give it more supervised, but give to Holly?
I think for Amelia, I believe it's just incompatible with the courthouse. Even if they did put the sidewalk in, I still think we'd look back on it and say, you know, I just don't think it's compatible.
Think it'd be more compatible between the courthouse and Richmond on three sixty, off of three sixty somewhere, maybe.
I would agree with that.
I was asking that. That way they probably wouldn't need a light and still have the entrances, but, uh, but somewhere off one fifty-three or three sixty other side. No comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say I absolutely agree that we do need some more rental property in the county. And we, we need.
I agree with that.
Uh, and, you know, and I think it's, you know, you're in the village area and that's good. And that's, you know, where, where we want building. But I have concerns on Amelia for all the reasons that were mentioned here, the pedestrian traffic, the, trying to get traffic in and out. So, you know, I'm personally really kind of torn about it because I, those are real concerns to me. That's a lot of traffic on the whole road, trying to get logistics with that, people walking, you know, into town. Uh, so I, I like to, I, I see both sides and, and I'm really torn on, on how to do that. But like I said, if it was a little up the road somewhere where you had better access, I'd be a whole lot more excited for that.
I guess my main concern is it goes from R one to R two. They done painted on the V dot. It doesn't, it doesn't come back to us.
And I absolutely agree with that. So that's another concern that I had written down since I wanted to make that change and then you're locked in. That is.
Have they already filed for the V dot study or is that something they're waiting to see what we do here?
Right, you have not begun the traffic study at all, right? With V dot, right?
But it's concerning the R one, R two, even if it becomes R two, you're still able to do R one in that development as a single family housing, right? It's all you do is allowing apartments, if the apartments don't work, you live back to a single family house. It's not like you're taking away the housing of, of this project. You're introducing another element that could be put on this property with the R two.
No, never, you could, you could rebuild six, seventeen or eighteen would be all you could do. An R one, yeah.
And you can't step on it for the dollars.
So not exactly.
Actually, yeah, because of the pond and stuff.
So if this gets resumed to R two, the permitted uses are two family dwellings, so not single family dwellings. Public utilities, boarding houses, parks, playgrounds, testary structures, major subdivisions, minor subdivisions, family courts.
That's R one, R two.
So R one are obviously permitted in, single family are permitted in R one, but not in R two. Because R two is supposed to be for medium to high concentration.
Any more questions?
As you're saying, real estate. Location, location, location. The problem here.
I don't think it's a bad use of the property.
Number of units. Where, where is that? Railroad.
Kind of beach, kind of beach of a house. I'm told.
That was overwhelmed and it doesn't allow for it to be easily integrated into the building. So, um, you need get, get to the number of of the mental beauty of the sidewalk is it's too large to be, um, something that I think would be good flagging to approve.
Any more questions? Motion? Make a bad at the thirty day. All for. Make a bad thirty day.
Exactly.
I'm motion to reject it.
Reject it altogether. I should have made, I get a second. I don't get a second, it'll fail. I'll have one more motion. Is our second to reject it altogether? Give it to the board supervisors or if I don't get a second, that will die. I have to get another motion or some other type of thing. Here no second, the motion will die for rejecting. Any other comments or questions or whatever you'd like?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Oh. The neighbors that are there just got concerns. This is going to impact them. But they're not up here with pitchforks, they're all great people. It sounds like this owner right here is very understanding and worldful man, he's trying to see if it'll work dollars and cents if it'll work. I don't think he's going to come in there, clear it out and build everything here at one time and say, let's do this, this is what we're facing. Would it be paused? Like we did with the Addison people, get him and neighbors to talk and see if they can work some stuff out and make dollars and cents work for him and eliminate a lot of meetings and stuff that might not work for him at all. But they're going to be his neighbors one way or the other. And I don't think he was going to be surprised that he's going to keep long term and give it to his kids. But neighbors all of them, they're very hated. So I think they need to get to go, get. Neighbors, all of them, and they're very hated. So I think they need to get to go, get to know each other. I think they could work out a whole lot of stuff before they brought it back to, if that is possible.
What a motion to table for X number of days, next meeting? I mean, that's thirty days.
However, you do, you want to do that, I just think, I, I think this man right here has got a lot of money, wants to take a chance. I think the neighbors are against it because they got a lot of concern. And I think they, they might be able to work that out, but it's going to be between two of them, whether we pass it or not in the years to come. If he builds houses there or if he builds apartments, they're going to be his neighbors. And if you're a neighbor, you need to get along. And if it, he wants to see if it'll work out financially for him to be able to do it. He didn't say nothing against, he didn't ever say flood out, no against sidewalks. He said he got to think about it, it's kind of, figure it out. We threw a lot on him at one time and a lot. And if they've got some time to tell their concerns to him and he's got some time to do a little bit of study, it might work out. It might not. But I personally would rather have a third conscious and if they could work it out a little bit more, there was a lot of questions directed to him, but and it's a permanent thing. And I don't know how you motion it. That's what I'm saying. I don't know how you motion all that. That was a suggestion.
Any more comments?
I'm not so sure that thirty days isn't a bad, you know, at, at the very minimum, give time people to think and talk. And, uh, I, I think you can table it till the next meeting. Might be at the, at the very least, give people chances to think about it. See where, see where we go. That's what we.
It's possible them, him to get together with them at some kind of little meeting spot, talking about, answer a lot of questions at the front. They're not going to kill them. They're very, minds are just working.
He might want to be somewhere where he can get out the back door. They too.
It was just a thought. I don't, I, I ain't going to make it a motion when I don't know how to do it, but I just hate to see it. He's, he's taking a big chance and they're just working. And we've got some questions. He's not saying no to none. And it's all just going kind of fast and I don't know if he can do it in thirty days, find out how much sidewalks cost. If BDOT will give him grants, but there's a lot of questions there. But a million needs renters and it might not be the best place for it the whole size, but they might be able to work out something about it, you know? It shouldn't be a dead piece of land.
So what you're suggesting, you do like a little town hall meeting with all the neighbors and y'all sit down and talk about it?
It, it fits the comp plan. Everything in it is just in a bad location.
Are all of you that are involved here familiar with it? Have you ever been out and just walked around that property or the street? I worked around it, you know, for years and I'm very concerned about the traffic and the congestion bunched into that little tiny area. I really do. I agree with Roy. I just feel like it's dangerous. And, and those flashing lights, that intersection is dangerous to start with. It's always been dangerous. And then we're going to impact it with this huge amount, well, a large amount of traffic.
My guess is it would require a stoplight. BDOT probably requires that.
Suppose it may be in their plans at some point in time anyway. I mean, we don't know what BDOT's long term.
That was supposed to be the next one, I think, on their plan.
Plans as to when it comes.
Yeah, but the difference is if it's on their plan, their timeline, they pay for it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Versus the developer paying.
Yeah.
Exactly. That's, that's the difference, yeah.
All right, you've heard comments. Chairman, I can't make the motion.
Think about it.
Try to pull stuff out of you.
Well, I would suggest, of course, I'm in favor of, of, of stalling on making a decision, but I would suggest that all of you go out there and just kind of walk and get a feel for it such that you really have a good mental picture of what we're talking about. I'm sure Roy does and of course, these guys all have a good mental picture. And I worked school lines out there for years and, and maybe Holly, I don't even know if you've been out there.
We surveyed it.
Um, I attempted to walk it just recently. It was so thick. I just decided I wasn't up to it that day. But, um, you know, I'm not, I can go back and walk it again with walkers and push acts and whatever. If anybody else is interested in walking it and just get a feel for it. Um, it's not a good location. It's a beautiful place.
If we were, actually, gentlemen in the back, if we were to table this for thirty days, would you be willing to maybe meet with some of the neighbors and all kind of talk about things and?
Absolutely.
The neighbors, y'all willing to meet with it?
Well, you know, I kind of thought that's what we were doing, that, you know.
I kind of put a lot of questions in his mind and he's got to think about too, you know, he can't make decisions.
Or spur of the moment, right?
I mean, he put seven million dollars after that. He's got to be thinking about it.
Yeah.
It's not like five dollars down the line, you know, losing five bucks. But, you know, you like to speak, Mr. P.
Yeah, I know it's not a public time to talk, but I'd like to address the seriousness of that intersection. Every time I take a funeral, down to three sixty, I do not go to that light. It's a very dangerous place. I go out to the overpass and come back and I'm going west. That's how far the way I go. So the reason is you can't cross over that, you know, unless you got police completely stopped on the western eastbound lane. It's a very, very dangerous intersection because of the speed, because you're coming off Me Haven and you can't really see what's coming on you. It's a very dangerous place.
Any other commission members have a comment? It works for me. You haven't said anything. John hasn't said anything.
I think what you're claiming, your table is for thirty days.
Kind of think about it. John, you have one way or the other. I mean, you're a surveyor, so you have an idea, Esther.
I'd go with the.
Lay of the land or something like that, you know, that's out there. Travis, you spoke. Wong, you got any comments, one way or the other?
I, I'll move with deferred for thirty days and give more time for, uh, things to develop. And I think hopefully there'd be some proper development and some reduction to that.
Well, you're putting out a formal motion. All right, Wong, ask for a second.
I got it.
Motion, thank second.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm still going around.
If you do this, are you going to have to have a vanilla public hearing?
I would not think so.
Change the school project, I would think so.
Wick, you have any comments on what you've already done, right? How about you? Work for the telephone.
My only comment is the sidewalk. And I wholeheartedly agree with what everybody's saying about the sidewalk.
I know they're expensive.
But if you think about it, we've got kids walking home from school every day down the middle of the road because there's no sidewalk.
Yep. A quarter of a mile.
You don't believe it, drive up through there at three o'clock in the evening.
But they're walking through people's yards and everything and it's really not a place right there.
Right. And I do agree with the sidewalk, but we keep harping on this man to build a sidewalk. We.
We hadn't took care of it.
We haven't taken care of our own backyard.
You're right.
That's it.
That's my only.
Are motions made in second? Roy, you got any other comments?
No.
Motion's made second, table it for thirty days until, till our next meeting, whichever comes first. We got roughly thirty days. Kind of think about it and see if anything else that we haven't thought about, the question, will not be another public hearing. It'd be up to us at that point. I think we have sixty days as a whole to, before we have to transfer to the board supervisors, if I'm not mistaken. So that would give everybody, and if anybody back there that had questions, you call me anytime. And I answer a machine at home. Uh, I may not call back exactly, just depends on what I get from the farm. But, um, you know, let someone know, Holly or some of the commission members, the next time we come, we can bring those questions to this committee. I'm calling for a motion, the motion's made in second. All in favor of the motion, making no more saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll discuss it next meeting. And will we have any other ordinances at that time? Don't know. All right, moving on.
One thing to keep in mind is we're not approving it or disapproving it because they do that. We're sending it with a recommendation or not a recommendation.
Yeah. We try to get all the facts we can out everybody. They can make a really good.
And you're not recommending the project, recommending the rezon.
Rezoning, yeah.
Right.
Uh, I don't have any other comments that I know of. Holly, do you have any that need to be brought before? Does any member have anything need to be brought to court? Appreciate everyone coming out. Nothing else. Get to adjourn the meeting till next month. Just think about it. Look at it. It's got to look at pretty soon. Honeycomb can grow pretty fast.